This regularly scheduled meeting of the Atlanta City Council, Monday, February 20th. Happy President's Day. We will call the initial roll. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Council President Shipman.
Present.
Council members Michael Bond, Matt Westmoreland.
Here.
Keisha Sean Waits, Jason Winston.
Here.
Amir Faroki.
Here.
Byron Amos, Jason Dozier.
Present.
Liliana Bakhtiar, Alex Wan, Howard Shook, Mary Norwood.
Here.
Dustin Hillis, Andrea Boone.
President.
Marcy Collier Overstreet, Antonio Lewis.
Mr. Deputyst.
Quorum present.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk. The agenda was set out ahead of time. If there are no changes to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adopt. Moved by Councilmember Wan.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Dozier. Any discussion on the motion to adopt the agenda? We can do this via unanimous consent without objection. Is there any objection to the motion to adopt the agenda? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count of unanimous consent on the motion to adopt.
Unanimous consent is 11 yeas, 0 nays.
11 yeas, 0 nays, the motion to adopt carries. Next on the agenda is the invocation. Today, we will simply be recognizing a moment of silence, but before that, I wanted to open the floor to my colleagues to acknowledge anyone who has passed since our last meeting. Councilmember Boone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer condolences to the family of Mr. Jerry Parks, who worked in our solid waste department for over 46 years, labored tirelessly, was a wonderful, wonderful employee. So to Commissioner Al Wiggins and the entire staff of the Public Works Department, we offer condolences on behalf of the City of Atlanta to the family of Mr. Jerry Parks, 46 years with the City of Atlanta.
Thank you. Councilmember Amos.
Yes, Mr. President. Just want to definitely offer our condolences to the family of Thomas Dorch Jr., as he passed, and also Reverend R.L. White and the Mount Effron family. Also, we offer our condolences.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis.
I want to offer the condolences to the family of Mr. Terry Clark, the owner of Sweet Lounge, who died. I had the opportunity to bring a proclamation from the City Council to his funeral the other day. So the family of Mr. Terry Clark, owner of Sweet Lounge. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? I would simply offer, I know many of us have President, former President Carter and the Carter family on our mind today. Many of us know the Carter family through all of his and the First Lady's service to our country, to our state, to our city. So I would offer that we keep them in our thoughts and prayers. With that, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. If you now please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no proclamations, commendations, or special awards on the agenda today, so we will move into public comment. We have many who have signed up to publicly comment today, so I would ask that we all stick strictly to time, two minutes, unless you've been yielded time by others. I'll try to make sure that everybody knows how much time they have. We'll start with Zeta Stanley Sartor, and followed by Ron Shakur and Edward Eves Jr.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers and Council President Shipman. I'm Zeta Stanley Sartor, and I live at the Landmark Condominiums. And I spoke with you back in April regarding the short-term rentals and the things that go on at the Landmark Condominiums. I understand that our legislation will not be heard today, and I will be back. But the Airbnb investors run our HOA board, and Lulu Homes seems to be the largest owner of all of the condos there. Drug deals, prostitution, and other illicit activities continue to be rampant in our building. Our building is not well-maintained, managed, or cleaned. We pay a high HOA fee, and when six to eight people occupy 550 square feet in a one-bedroom apartment, this puts extra stress and expenses on all of our utility usage. We do support the legislation, as I understand it has been proposed. I think it would be a great fit for us. But actually, they are running a business, and I think that they should have a business license to run it, because none of the Airbnb HOA investors live in our building, not one. And they don't come over to find out what is going on. Hopefully, I sent all of you a video, an email and a video. Hopefully, you got a chance to look at it. And it talked about how one of the illegal board members considers our building a cash cow.
Time is expired. Next will be Ron Shakur.
Ron Shakur, South West Atlanta. We in a housing crisis. The last public speaker right there speaks of something that just shocked me. I just heard, met her recently, within a few minutes ago, that Airbnbs, there's projects that's running through our community, project with no proper oversight and concerns, that has an impact on our community, on our institutions, our schools, our families, our wives, our aunts, our uncles, do not have a place to live in this city today. It is a rumor, I don't know, that one particular county that borders Atlanta is not accepting no Section 8 vouchers. How can that be? How can we have a housing system that was built in 1930 that lifted America out of the shame of homelessness, of hobos and people sleeping in rail cars in parks called public housing? Public houses that have created doctors and lawyers and helped build this city from Boyn Homes, Capital Homes, Hernan Homes, all these public houses that had mothers and fathers. And now we get a word from the state of Georgia, coming from the capital of Georgia, there's some possibilities that they're going to provide tents and have a camp? Who does that, Mr. Westmoreland? Our schools, our institutions, everything is impacted by homes and houses. If we do not have housing, where is the votes down here? Where is the history? Where is Maynard? Where is our representation? Where is the place that America looked at Atlanta as a place that was special? Where would that go? What would be the face to martyr have to address? What would martyr address if black votes and black faces don't matter in this city? Please stop all legislation.
Time is expired.
Until you measure the impact it has on black human beings, mothers and fathers in this city.
Time is expired.
Who deserve a right to exist.
Next will be Edward Eves Jr., followed by Margie McLeod and Alma Lot.
Thanks for having me, Mr. Shipman. Councilman Shipman, members. I noticed while this gentleman was here, and that's talking, that everybody had their head down. And I'm trying to understand, as a new resident here, been here three years, why people are so angry. And now I'm understanding why. The reason I'm here today, and the reason they come here, is to be heard. It seems like, with all due respect, that it's just a formality. But the things I hear, people, they want to be heard. In my case, I want to be heard on the fact that you have a serious problem at the Fulton County Courthouse, which this, these members don't have jurisdiction, but you have the power to look into that. You have apartments in College Park, Georgia, you have apartments in Atlanta. When a person has an issue, landlord or tenant issue, the jurisdiction falls in Fulton County. An individual has a right to due process. The vehicle of due process is under the 14th Amendment, the Eco Protection Clause. I was defrauded in an apartment complex. I filed the proper appeal, I followed the proper steps. My appeal was heard on November 28th, 2022, for Belinda Edwards. The appellant did not show up in court, therefore, default judgment should have been entered. My appeal prior to that took two years. Do you know why it took two years? Because they were trying to delay the process. I wrote several letters to Tina Robinson, the clerk of the court. The point that I'm trying to make here, and the reason why I'm here today, is because there is a serious corruption problem inside the courts, from the magistrate judge who handled the case, Judge DeFour, and individuals involved in the case. I'm asking, I'm asking that this be looked into. I brought documents here to hand to anyone who wants to look at this, because you have the evidence. Someone really needs to look into this. No one should have to wait two years for an appeal. No one should have to wait and be told by the clerk of the court, or by the clerk for Judge Edwards, that, whoa, I'm sorry, we did hear your appeal, but we're waiting on a new staff attorney. I went to law school, and I know the game that's played.
Time is expired. Next will be Margie McLeod, followed by Alma Lot.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Hey, good afternoon, everybody. I'm back here, rent control, and we need rent control to be put on the ballot. We can't do this, Westmoreland, because last time you said it cannot be done. Let the people vote. That's the only thing that, doesn't your district need rent control? Anybody here, district need rent control? That's what I'm saying. We're not giving up. We can put this on the ballot. Member wages number $5.15. So what y'all doing a project, we need not do no more research. The crisis, we have a crisis here by housing. You see all these people out here on the street. It's not going to get no better. It's getting worse. So what I'm telling them, we need to put rent control on the ballot and let the people vote for it, because we got a Senate Bill 125. Donzella James gonna put in for the state. The city could do it, and we need it. If you care about, the landlord's so greedy, some of these people got AI here in the street. 89 property? If this true, let me know, because who's buying up these property? Who is buying up the property? We talking about development, is city council's buying up the property? Let me know. Be blessed.
Thank you. Next will be Alma Lot, followed by Jody Williams, followed by Davenport Jones.
I'm gonna say good evening to everybody, but I am ashamed about what's happening in Vine City, Ingersoll Avenue, and the West End among our people. Y'all already know that so many people are being homeless. You run through your community, you see new houses, you see furniture on the streets. Who is representing us? Who is behind the people? I mean, say, y'all the ones committing crime. Y'all the ones got our youths on the street doing this, because they have nowhere to go. When you put their parents on the streets, the shelter don't take in older youths. They take in babies. So that gives older youth a lead way, so older people could get them and put them towards gangs. Y'all talking about gun control and safety. I don't want to hear no more about gun control and safety. Put housing in our community. What HUD give y'all money for? Where y'all hiding this HUD money? At Westside Future Fund, in Best Atlanta? When these people go to classes, they get turned down. They say y'all don't qualify. I mean, say, it's a shame. It's a shame. We done been through three black males, over 10,000 black families that became homeless. And why? Poor leadership. And it's a shame that we have to live like this. It's a shame that we have to see children on the streets, because y'all don't care. Y'all have somewhere to stay. Your friends and family got somewhere to stay. Come on, help the people, not yourself.
Next will be Jody Williams. Jody Williams. Davenport Jones. Oh, sorry, Davenport James, or maybe James Davenport, it's written Davenport James. Next will be Latonya Gates. Due to yielded time, you'll have up to 10 minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Latonya Gates, and I stand today. I am the Executive Director of Paw Kids, a nonprofit on the west side of Atlanta, and we are here, and we want to, I want, before we start, I want all my kids to look at Dustin Hillis, number nine. That's your city councilman, and he's the one that's supposed to protect you guys and make sure that you guys have safe housing, education. So that's Dustin Hillis, number nine. Can you wave your hand, Dustin Hillis, to all my kids, so they can see that it's you, Okay. Back in 2, wow, so y'all see that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Back in 2013, my father Chuck Johnston and Sam Diamond put their hard work in, and they had a love for Grove Park Renewal. These two men worked hard, and they bought 39 properties over a period, from 2013 to 2015. They wanted to be able to provide housing at a cost, at a low cost for our parents and community leaders. So Sam decided to donate $1 million to Grove Park to make this happen. My father started buying houses and fixing these houses over in Grove Park. After that, 2015, my father saw fit, that he was old, and he was saying, we needed somebody to come in that could really tote this onto the next level. So he hired and brought on Dustin, I'm sorry, I'm so upset, because he didn't speak to my kids. I think that is very rude, and that's very unprofessional, but I got to catch this. But at that time, he decided to bring on Justin Bleakler and Hessel Baker. They took it from there, and they began to buy more houses and fix these houses for our people. During that time, people were told in our neighborhood that they would be able to buy the homes that they had fixed up. It's all in records, you guys can look back, you have a book to see it. During that time, the only homes that were sold to the people in our neighborhood were to four white ministers, and it's in the book, none of the black leaders were able to buy. Sam decided to donate an additional, another $1.2 million, and that brought the total to $3.2 million that he donated to Grove Park. Now, in his, in his, in his, I love Sam, he helped us, we would not be where we are, Paw Kids would be, because he donated to us as well. But his desire was, he wanted to make sure that the Grove Park people had a place to stay, because notification was coming. At that time, in 2015, Mr. Bleakler decided to convert those houses over to a nonprofit. So what did that leave us? They left us with no housing. We was not able to buy those houses that we was promised to in the beginning. I feel like in 2015, our dream was lost. Justin began to make houses into rooming houses. Dustin Hillis, I know that you know this, we guys have, you have the open records in the book that shows this. He has not been to court, but you will hear from that later, and these things are happening right here before the eyes of my kids. The problem that I have is, out of 80% of the people that live in the Grove Park Renewal houses, they are not from our neighborhood. They are not from the neighborhood, and these people are not being treated fairly. Now, I heard everybody in here speak today. It's a difference with Grove Park Renewal. That money is there. Their money is not there. We can change this today. He just, he, last week, he met with Best Atlanta for additional $347,000. Where is the money going for our people? These kids deserve a place to stay. Now, I'm all about the Year of the Youth, right? I am for that, but how are we going to do a Year of the Youth if we can't stabilize our kids? And they have, they don't have a place to stay? And let me take it a step farther. I am a proud graduate of Atlanta Public School. It saved my life. In fact, I was kicked out of every DeKalb County school. In Atlanta Public School, I went to a school called Exodus Cities and Schools. I was kicked out, so I had to go to an alternative school in Atlanta, right? The only way we made it, and the youth made it, from Perry Home to back to Boyn Homes to Bankhead Court, was those people cared about us. We had C.T. Morton, we had people that marched for these kids and loved us unconditionally. That's why I stand, as a black owner, a black owner running a nonprofit in Grove Park. It's no way I would have not made it. We have got to build this. We got to have more community. We're here, we want to help. We're reaching out, begging for help, but we need you guys to come in. Zoning, planning, this is illegal, what he has done, putting four families in one house off of one meter. You guys can take a look, I put the pictures in the book. And he's making these, making my parents pay rent. And if you don't go to his classes, he won't renew a lease, which some of my parents, I mean, they had a lease in three years, the rest that are infected in the houses. I challenge you guys to know the story, own the story, and help us change this story. We cannot do this without you guys. It's right here in your, right here. Drive by. Take a look at the houses. It's illegal. You cannot make a single-family house into four houses. We are not slaves. We're human beings. We need your help. Dustin Hillis, we need your help. We voted you in. We need your help, Mr. Hillis. Thank you.
And let's stay up here, y'all. We're gonna stay up here, we're gonna support everybody. Come, everybody stay up here. Everybody stay.
Next will be Quintoria Nguyen. Due to yielded time, you'll have four minutes.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Quintoria Nguyen. I'm a single mother of five. I was born and raised in the Boyn Homes community. I have two kids who attend Kip at Woodson Park, who are honor roll students. I, as a single parent, has been trying to speak with Grove Park Renewal about housing for my kids, and I aren't receiving the proper help that I need. Mayor Dick can speak on Year of the Youth, but how can it be about, how can it be about Year of the Youth when some of the youth doesn't have housing? Grove Park Renewal can't provide nor help us parents with housing, or a place, or a safe place to call home. Being the parents of five kids is hard enough, especially when raising them in the streets. I've tried contacting Mr. Justin Time at the time for months, and still has yet to receive an email or a phone call, or a call back. Over the years, to keep my kids safe, I've had to turn to Paw Kids, because at this moment, that's the safest place for my kids. Paw Kids put the effort into helping parents of the youth find stability for our kids, who has to grow in this community. The website of Grove Park Renewal stated that the Grove Park Renewal was started as an effort to empower neighbors through quality dignified housing. How? I thought this was for the community. The houses were for the peoples. Mr. Justin claimed to be getting funds for our community, but has yet to put into our community. We, as the people of Paw Kids, watch people who's not from our community get housing in our community. Mr. Justin has given executive, his executive assistant a brand-new home on Mark I, while our community had to sit and watch a ribber cut in. Do you know how heartbreaking that is? Let me tell you, it's heartbreaking to see his beautiful new home when you don't have a place to call home, but yet, hold on, but yet, we're still displaced. How does that make us feel? I watched Mr. Justin turn houses into rooming houses in our neighborhood. That's an actual fact. I ask you to know the story, see the story, own the story, and change the story. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Anthony Gates.
With all due respect, Mr. Alex Wan, can you please join us? You had all day to eat. Can you please join the people?
Ms. Robinson. We have Anthony Gates is next. Due to yielded time, you have up to 10 minutes.
I say, thank you, Councilman. Again, my name is Anthony Gates. Y'all luckily had the pleasure of hearing my mom speak. She doesn't look like my mom, but she told y'all a bit of her story. I just want to speak to the ethics of the situation. We're speaking about a nonprofit here. We're not speaking about a block bill, we're not speaking about some wealthy businessmen. We're speaking about an org that was giving money from small churches, from small Rotary Clubs, from small groups, from schools like Woodfield and West Minister. This is a nonprofit that was giving money from our community, from the community that we all live in, whether you live out West Paces, or if you live in Edgewood, like me. They've collected money on the backs of these kids you're seeing, specifically for a rental company. In essence, this is a rental company, this is not a nonprofit. As y'all say, Mr. Hillis knows, I mean, they have over 45 properties in equity, that's over $10 million. This is not, they're sitting on these properties. This isn't owned by the community, this is owned by the company. They also just acquired a, another apartment complex. And this is all done in the, in the name of loving the community and having houses for the community. And it should be owned by a governing board, right? I mean, as a nonprofit, but it just doesn't seem that way. If you look on their website, we've handed y'all all kind of handouts, but also on their website, it says they seek to empower the people of Grove Park. But all we're seeing that's being empowered is Grove Park Renewal. There's no real, there's no real change of power from the org to the people that they're serving. As a grant writer, one question we often have to ask is, what percentage of the money you're bringing in is going to actual programming and not going to your pockets or going to the org? And I think that's a question that needs to be asked in this situation. How much money is truly going to the community? How much money is truly going to the families versus just going to the equity of a business that plans to rent for the next 100 years? That's what we're told that they plan to do. We're going to rent to your community for the next 100 years off of the money we raised off of your community. And this can't possibly sit well with the families we're serving. We study a lot of great leaders, in the words of Dr. X, this would be considered a tokenism, where you're going to tell somebody, you're going to really help them in a way, and you offer them low rent. This low rent, and it not only increases every year, but still with no true ownership. We just want y'all to look into this and make some true changes, especially where y'all can. This is something that's supposed to be controlled by us and the community. And that's it. Okay. If you all didn't know, so it's a lot of pictures in the book, but this is a picture of the house that's owned by the Executive Director of the nonprofit. It's the largest house on the street and virtually in the neighborhood. He's the only one that has ownership out of this situation that's been going on for now seven years. There's no ownership by people in the community.
Thank you. Next speaker is Swift. Due to yielded time, you'll have up to 10 minutes.
I might not need all that, but first of all, my name is Swift, Grove Park resident, now homeowner, used to be a renter. We'll get to that. First and foremost, Dustin Hillis. Excuse me, Dustin. Thank you. Respect me while I'm talking to you. I want you to look when I address you, just like you fail to look at our children when they addressed you initially. Your demeanor since we walked in this room has been disgusting, and we ain't going for that. So you got to respect this when we talk to you. That's first and foremost. Second of all, I want to get to Grove Park Renewal and talk about that a little bit. Like I said, I used to be a renter, and when I came into the community, Grove Park, the neighborhood, there was a lot of history there, there were a lot of people. There were a lot of people that were moving to the Grove Park community for the sake of like becoming the community, loving the community and building our community in sense of, and taking care of our residency, I mean, our legacy residents. And so I moved there, and just like others, we were told in the beginning that the possibility of purchasing our homes would be available to us. And so as we continued to rent at affordable rates, and you know, thank God for that, but as we continued to rent and got to a place where we were able to purchase our homes and we approached them and said, hey, we would like to buy our homes, we were met with resistance. We were met with resistance and excuses. And so I would like to address a couple of things. So on the website, the word empower, like this is like a key word nowadays. Everybody wants to say, oh, we want to empower people, empower people because it's sexy. So, but I want to address what the word empower really means. So after we define the word power, then we can hold it up to the light and see if it matches up, right? So the word empower, one of the definitions is to give the authority or power to do something, authority or power to do something. But the definition I like is the second definition that says to make someone stronger and more confident, especially in controlling their life and claiming their rights. That's empowerment, right? And so, excuse me, when we talk about Grove Park Renewal, I have a couple of things that I want to ask about. So on the website, they have core values, and these are the things that makes people want to donate is the nice shiny things that make us look better, right? And so the last two core values is to generate human connections and saying that, no, no, yes, no, let me go. The last two, excuse me, is to create quality, sustainable living experience. And so if you ask most Grove Park Renewal residents, do they feel like they're living in a quality environment? Is their living experience quality? Is it sustainable? So if you have families, and of course, in a lot of the initial talks, the talk was about getting families into Grove Park, right? And so if the, if the goal is to empower families and residents of Grove Park, how is multifamily units being built as rooming houses sustainable in the long run? It's not, right? So because if your family expands, then I'm screwed. If my family expands, then you're screwed. So how is that sustainable? Let's talk about that. The second thing is to honor neighborhood history and culture. This is their last core value. And so under that, they say, we acknowledge past and current racism, disenfranchisement, and discrimination against the majority black population in our neighborhood and its impact on contemporary society. With this, we aim to serve our neighborhood leaders and aspire to do so humbly, diligently, and imaginatively, imaginatively. So the question is, out of these residents that we have in Grove Park and that are in Grove Park Renewal properties, when your residents, and remember that word we used, empowered, right? So if your, if your residents see something that they see as an injustice, or they see something that's wrong, but refuse to speak up out of fear of retaliation or consequences or losing their home, how is that empowering? How does somebody feel empowered when they fear the consequences of saying that something's wrong? On the Grove Park website, it says that a number of houses were sold, and this small number can actually be debated, like depending on how you swing it. But my question is, out of these houses that were sold, how many of the buyers, how many of the owners look like us? All right? And so when you came to Grove Park, before Grove Park was so attractive, the majority of Grove Park looked like us. The majority of Grove Park no longer looks like us. When it comes to the scape of a homeownership, how many homeowners look like the people that you came quote unquote to serve? Okay. So what you have, and another thing is like they, they specifically talk about empowering leaders as well. And this will be the last thing I touch on, and now I'll let y'all go because y'all have been gracious to me so far. Thank you, Dustin, for looking up. I appreciate that. When you have black leaders who move into a community and are told that they'll one day be able to purchase a home or at least have the option to purchase their home. And so they plant their feet in this community. They do the work in this community. They go to war against giants and speak truth to power in this community, hand in hand. And then when they attempt to buy the house, they are met with resistance and excuses. And even after other neighbors have vouched and pleaded on these leaders' behalf, we need them in the community. You should sell them their homes. They are still met with resistance and excuses. How is that empowerment? Shameless. What does it say when the individuals that you sold your properties to, number one, don't look like the people that you say you were here to serve, but number two, don't even live in the houses anymore? They flipped them. They flipped them. So I'm like, what was the purpose? What was the purpose? My name is Swift. I live in Grove Park. I'm a homeowner, thank God, but we had to get it from the mud. We got it. We got it, though. We had to get it from the mud. But all I'm saying is that our community, our burden, when we go home, we got to go home and live with this. We have to live amongst people who might not be there three months from now. We've seen so many families have to up and leave, have to up and leave. The original verbiage for Grove Park Renewal was affordable housing. And we know in Atlanta, that was a real sexy thing at the time. Affordable housing. What have we really done to push that in our communities for the people who really need it, right? And so when you're talking about breaking houses down into units and charging more per unit than you would have the whole house? That's problematic. Thank you for allowing me to have time. Boom, I made it, under 10 minutes. Boom. Thank y'all. But I hope that y'all hear us more than anything. God bless y'all. Thank you.
Next will be Dwan Robinson. Due to yield of time, you'll have up to 10 minutes.
No, Tim Freeman's supposed to be next, huh?
That would be one of them.
Oh, my apologies. You're right. Tim Freeman?
I accept your apology.
Yes, you're up there, sorry. Tim Freeman, due to yield of time, you'll have up to 10 minutes.
All right, great. They've already said my name is Tim Freeman, and I must say, I am not pleased to be here again, but I am thankful for the opportunity. We shouldn't have to be here repeatedly over and over again for something that's so blatant. So let me start kind of sort of there, and let me redirect to, once again, Mr. Hillis, who in full disclosure, has been a friend of mine for quite some time, and I'm going to continue to hold on to your friendship. I think we even Facebook friends, but I must say, I was applaud and probably shouldn't have been surprised, but a little bit surprised at your behavior before and now as regards to addressing the kids. And kids, I want to say to y'all, please do not take his behavior today as an example of how y'all need to be, but do be mindful of how you can be treated because of our black faces. Be mindful, but do not take that as an example. Okay, guys? Great. So with that out of the way, once again, I thank you guys for being here. I want to also thank God, the Creator, the sustainer of life. I want to thank my ancestors, my black ancestors, who went through so much for me to stand here and be here, so much injustice, so much turmoil at the same time. But I also want to thank them for their strength, the strength that they put into me. And what I'm going to do today is help to put some strength into y'all, the strength to do right, because it's a very simple situation that we dealing with here. I used to think it was complex, but as my colleagues and friends and neighbors started to break it down to me, I said, no, this is not so hard to understand. Even a country boy like me can understand when you been bamboozled, led astray, lied to, and been separated and segregated after all that we've been through on that northwest side of town. Atlanta using the name as the cradle of civil rights, using the name and the description of the city that is too busy to hate. Well, I can't tell. I've been living in Grove Park for a long time. And let me say this, I've been living on Bankhead because it's not just Grove Park. We got parts of Vine City, Almond Park, we got Center Hill, we have Dixie Hill, and what's happening to one is happening to the other. There's a wraparound effect, and I don't like it. But I do understand it. What we have going on here is both extreme gentrification and extreme capitalism. It's all about the dollar, dollar bill. See? And we have elected officials who we trusted and still try to trust to do the best for us within the constraints, especially of the law. Now we have Mr. Hillis, I mean, I'm sorry, Justin Bleeker owning, I would estimate it at over a half million dollar home. See? In our neighborhood, and as my colleague explained to you, these monies were raised off of our backs. A lot of the monies were raised off of my approval of this gentleman. So yes, I speak to you and saying that we been bamboozled because I know that gone, well, I been bamboozled. That's why I'm here today, to try to make them in, to let y'all know that our story is not ending, it's just beginning. But as I understand it, not only are we dealing with what I would describe as illegal activities, unlawful activities, I mean, at the worst, and very, very, very unethical at the least, and it's, it's being done under somebody's watch on the city council. Like I said, I'm just a country boy. In full disclosure, I get most of my information from this beautiful sister here. She keeps me informed because I'm raising my kids and I stay too busy to really stay in the frame of all of this stuff and keep up with all of this crap. It's a shame that I have to be here today again. But what I realized, that I came here about a month ago and gave a very impassioned speech, very heartfelt speech, and I meant it from the heart. But as I went home and I thought to myself, I realized that sometimes my white counterparts think that when a person speaks in a passionate manner, that they have been personally hurt and that they've been hurt by that particular individual. So I wanted to come back and make it very clear, crystal clear, that personally, Tim Freeman is doing very well. I would not be here if it wasn't for the personal pain that I feel for the way that these, these colonizers continue to treat our people unjustly. You would have thought that in 2023, after slavery, after Gen Croism, after all the movements forward that we made. Thank you, my brother. I do sweat a lot, but I would not let that stop my performance. After all the advances that we made, it behooves me that because of the love and influence of money, that we have to take steps backwards like this. See? When I came into the neighborhood of Grove Park and shortly after that, I started seeing the extreme gentrification process, and I saw the process a long time ago in the terms of disinvestment. They start always going, how come we can't get a grocery store? How come we can't get a bank? And they would always say this thing about rooftop, rooftop counts. But at the same time, they were talking about rooftop counts and how many people in the neighborhood, they would close it down the project. So how are we going to get the thing we need under the rules that you already got set out? The rooftop counts and the population counts when you removing the population? See? This is what they call social engineering, for those who don't know. So I noticed it a long time ago, and as I moved into the neighborhood, I noticed that it was getting to be very unfair and very extreme. And being one of the community leaders in my neighborhood and being around for so long, people come to me with their dirty laundry. They come to me with their hurt feelings. They come to me saying, Freeman, man, you won't even believe this crap, man. I got to move, man. I got to move. I've been in this neighborhood 35, 40 years. I got to move. Why? Why you got to move, man? Man, my rent done went up to $1,500 a month. See? They got to, when they move, they got to take their kids with them. At Latonya already spoke on, and y'all know when these kids got to be transient like that, when they don't have roots and, and connections to the same teachers year after year, y'all, y'all know what it costs. I know you, white people know because you study this all the time. You study us more than we study ourselves. And that's another thing that Latonya and them have done a great job with these kids is empowering them to know that they can stand on their own two feet. And I understand we all in this thing together, but let me make it clear. At this point in time, I am strictly concerned about the well-being of my black people, people of color, people who are so far in this not United States of America. And let me say this again, in this not United States of America. We got a long way to go before we display the type of unification that we talk about in that great assembly that you guys just gave a little while ago, how you pledged allegiance. Got, got a long way to go before we get there, okay? So I'll say again, I want to make it crystal clear that Mr. Bleeker hasn't done anything to me from a personal level, so this is not personal for me. This is all about the advancement of my people. It's about lies, deceit, because I will tell you, he didn't have to do it that way. The man got over $10 million to do the right thing with, with what he had, but his, obviously, his intentional, his original intentions were to come in here and use his processes to do a massive land grab. And that's, that's what it's about. Even, even the Beltline, the new Northwest Atlanta Park, all these green spaces. I, I recently was referred to a quote that says, the green spaces are used to remove black faces. See? And I want y'all to think about it. That's kind of how they do it. And like I said, now, I'm just a old country boy, so I'm just, I'm, listen, I'm just talking from what I hear from my sister, what I, what I deduced through the many years that I've lived on this west side of town. I know the undercurrents and the ins and the outs, and I do see what's going on. And I don't really mind progress, but man, listen, it has got to be fair. It's got to be more than fair in terms of dealing with the, the original inhabitants of that side of town, the black people. It's got to be more than fair because the processes that y'all went to get us here were not fair. So when we talk about equity, we got to dig hard because it ain't like you get the same thing I get and you get the same thing I get. No, I've been left behind a long time ago, so these kids deserve way more than I got and way more than any Caucasian people or any person of influence deserves. See? I just about done did my time on this world. I'm looking out and living for them, for y'all. I'm Gucci. 24/7, I'm Gucci, and if I wasn't, there's nothing you could do to break my spirit. So I thank y'all for this time to express myself. I want y'all to remember that I came here to give y'all the strength that I have and my ancestors gave to me, the strength to look inside yourself, the inner strength, and do something about this, all right? Peace.
Next will be Dwan Robinson. Due to yield of time, you'll have up to 10 minutes.
Hey, when Dr. Marjorie King was given the Nobel Peace Prize, none of the whites in Atlanta was going to show up. There was a white man, Sam Marcel told Mr. Woodruff them, if y'all don't show up for Marjorie King, Coca-Cola won't come here. Y'all need Atlanta more, and Atlanta need you. It was a packed house with white folks when Dr. Marjorie King came after he won Nobel Peace Prize. Me bringing it up first is saying that when black and white get along, it's a great thing. It's a wonderful relationship because sometime to get us over the hump, we do need our white brothers and sisters, our Jewish brothers and sisters, gay and straight. Ms. Pat, who worked for city council, whom I love, Mr. Shipman, have had a great relationship. Ms. Norwood, who I chose to support over black candidate Keisha Bottom because I believe in her loving these black folks. Mr. Matt Westmoreland, I've never disrespect gay, straight, or whatever. My relationship with him have always been the same. So it's not white and black because I So it's not white and black because I respect white and black relationship. But when you bring a gentleman down here from South Dakota, it's Justin Bleeker, with South Dakota, black population is one percent, there's no race relationship there. And then when you bring a gentleman here from Tennessee that divide us, so here's the thing, when you bring outside people to Atlanta, it causes division because they, they do not respect black and white relationship. What Mr. Justin Bleeker is doing, along with Dustin Hillis and their friend Josh Humphries in the mayor's office, who protecting this man. I was in court the other day, I watched Josh Humphries in the mayor's office, called the solicitor and said, Mr. Justin Bleeker was not be in court today, can you put it off for thirty days? You can't do that, you're not a lawyer. You can't do that. This man is taking single-family lots, building four houses on there with no permits. I'm so glad you overzoning, Ms. Marshall, guess what? You gotta stand on it, you gotta stand on it, call him out. I don't care if Josh Humphries work for the mayor or not, you better call it out, you better call it out. And guess what? Let's take it back. Justin Bleeker was for-profit, Dustin Hillis and Felicia Moore them convinced him to go nonprofit, because guess who knew Microsoft was coming? Your city councilman? So as a new nonprofit in the Grove Park Bankhead corridor, how is they the main one that communicate with Microsoft? You're a new nonprofit. Latonya Gates, we know that forever, I'm born and raised and born home with a nonprofit. I wasn't invited there, but Justin Bleeker was because he friend with Dustin Hillis, told him what was coming. Now Microsoft not coming, you see everybody pivoting. Felicia Moore, who gave, brought that land and overlooked Atlanta for pennies on a dollar, because they all knew that Microsoft was coming. So when y'all sit here and play this game the young folks don't know, we know you know. We know Dustin Hillis been in touch with them. We know about Dustin Hillis wanting to move the black lines from District Nine so he can go over there, because he don't care to deal with black folks, and it's a shame. It's a crime shame because the woman that sent to his right, Ms. Mary Norwood, had more black folks on her campaign, she catered to her blacks, you know, she told me, the one, I might not understand the culture, but I will surround myself with people that does. I can respect that and understand that. Mr. Shook, I've never had a displeased conversation with you, but I watch you call stuff out. When you see stuff ain't right, you'll question it. Now y'all know this stuff with Dustin Hillis ain't right. Y'all know what they doing. Y'all know. It's a reason why Mr. Shipman have kept him over public safety three times, over three times. All the dilapidated homes, all the homes that have been demolished. Who do you think wife represent the companies that have done all the demolishing? Who do you think? So either you a collusion with that, Mr. Shipman, or you not? Because you told me that you rotate. Now Felicia had him over public safety for two years straight, and you come back and put him over there for two more years. Come on, man. Are you in collusion or not? I just told you, your campaign had more black voters than the mayor's race. You can't keep saying playing these games and saying your hand is not on it. That was the whole reason why Felicia Moore stepped down and put her support with Dustin Hillis, so she could throw rocks and hide her hands and play like, oh, I don't get a vote unless it's a tie, with the whole ghost deal. Who you think had the untimed vote, y'all? Jason, Byron, Jason, Antonio, Marcy, Ms. Boone, Dustin Hillis. You don't think it was nothing in it for him? Hey, we gotta start playing, man, because guess what, it's not a black and white thing, it's a right and wrong thing. Like Mr. Alex Wong, you run one of the biggest nonprofits in the city. I've never seen you come over to Park here to see these kids, man. You take care of your community, and you're supposed to. But a leader, Antonio Lewis, put his, his nose in everybody's business. If Marjorie King didn't care about gay rights, civil rights, housing and voting rights, he wasn't a poor man, he didn't have to care about none of that. But a leader that don't care about District Twelve, Eleven, Ten, Four, Three, and One, a leader care about the whole community. We can't say Atlanta too busy to hate, and we allowing a few bad apples to spoil the whole bunch in Atlanta, man, we can't do that. Just like a leader, now, I'm saying, Mr. Shipman, you see Mr. Wong over there sitting down eating, I don't expect you to call him out in front of us, but some of the bad behavior, you just gotta, you just gotta say, hey, guys, these people come down here, they pay the park, either they come down here to speak, can we show them some common courtesy and just be present and listen to them? On their nine-to-five job, if they don't do that, they out of there. So as a leader, I would just like to see more leadership with you, sir, and less politics. No, it's like, people losing their life, losing their job, like he said, i- if this the mayor, I mean, this the year of the youth, right? And if parents are getting put out, where you think the youth going, Mr. Shipman, out there in the streets? And not only they're attacking blacks, they're attacking whites too. I was the first one to show up, almost wouldn't have fight, no, I'm saying, when they killed that, uh, white senior in Buckhead, the seventy-seven-year-old lady, you think I like that? Heck, no. But what it shows the disrespect is, if you're not fearful to kill a seventy-seven-year-old white woman, you're not fearful to kill this thirteen-year-old black boy. That's when it's a problem, man. You know what I'm saying? Because black and white probably had a disagreement in Atlanta, but blacks don't go around killing whites, and whites ain't going around killing blacks. But Dustin Hillis and Justin Bleeker are killing blacks in another way systematically. Blacks are not allowed to own homes over there, uh, Mr. Shipman. Therefore, you don't have a say in the public school system because fifty percent of that budget is what, Mr. Ma, um, Ma, what is it? Property taxes? Property taxes, is that right? Sorry, all right? So if I don't own a home, I don't have a say-so. I don't have no stake in the game if I can't own a home. Now, this man was given three-point-two million dollars a bought home to help blacks become ownership, Byron. He turned them into renters. And they gotta take a class to prove they fit to own a home. Come on, man, that ain't right. But he came to these people in the name of Jesus, though, that's the thing you gotta understand. He came in the name of Jesus, which make it colonization, not gentrification, colonization when you come in the name of Jesus to sweet-talk you and then I wanna come stab you in the back. So he has not been a good steward over it. And about ninety percent of the home, I miss over street, I'm saying you overzoning, do not have a permit. I don't want you to play politics like they scared to send Josh Humphries out there. He dead wrong. He is dead wrong. And soon we leave here, we are sure going to enter and file the ethical complaints against Josh Humphries. So in your package, you see the email where Justin Bleeker said that the mayor gave him the okay to do that. Now, I ain't gonna assassinate the mayor character because I don't know, I haven't looked him in his face and asked him. But if that's the case, city council, we got a major problem. So two things happen when you running for office, we need the money, oftentimes the white developers and the white business leader got the money, but we also need the black votes too now, so two-way street. We can't satisfy one and forget the other, we gotta find a way to help both, because the businessmen have to make money. But the poor people that get out there and vote that y'all plead to also deserve to be treated with love and respect, though. Whether or not Mayor Justin Sam Marcel got along all the time, but guess what? For the greater good of Atlanta, they got along. Mayor Kasey reading this deal, probably didn't get along all the time, but for whatever the reason was, when it came to the betterment of the people they did. Man, we cannot have white leadership and black people at us, we can't do that, man. There's a whole generation that don't know hate. Black kids and white kids I see on social media all the time, hugging each other, laughing. Man, we cannot promote hate. This, if y'all allow him to keep doing this, is promoting hate. Man, we cannot promote hate, man. Like Tim said, we don't want them to look at, um, Dustin Hillis and hate him, but we want him to know that he ain't about nothing. And you know what I really wanna say? So please, Mr. Shipman, you always tell me your kids are watching, let them see daddy stand up and help black folks, please, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Next, next will be, next will be H. McGinnis, followed by Stephanie Saxon and Richard Paner.
Mr. Shipman, I had an emergency, would you please allow me to take my time? And I do know you called my name, but I had to leave in an emergency, is that possible?
Yes, I'll give you two minutes.
Okay. Uh, first, give an honor to God, who I oftentimes call my conductor. I don't have a PhD, but I do have a G O D. You all know me. We have an emergency situation. Uh, Eagles Run apartment, there's a young lady who is suffering with bronchial asthma. Her entire apartment, the flooring is cracked. Uh, management actually sent out a contractor only to repair the hallway. This lady is suffering, manager told her, since she called code enforcement, she will not renew her lease. This woman is afraid she is about to be evicted, she's sixty years old, she has a serious problem. You all have received, should have received a video from activist Laron McGee, activist Lee, you should have seen, received that video this morning, each of you. I beg you, look at that video, take time, each of you, if she's not even in your district, pay attention to this situation. This young lady could be nearing to her deathbed. I just got off the phone with her. You will be getting, uh, you will be contacted by the media, I'm sure, because as you all know, that is what I do. So I've contacted Channel Five and Channel Forty-Six. Please, 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 help this lady. She is suffering. This woman is sixty-two years old, she's on SSI, she has never been late for her rent, not one time. In her unit, a balcony collapsed last year. She has an elderly lady living underneath her. These apartments are near ruined, and let me please warn you all, you're about to see this situation all over this city. You got dilapidated, dilapidated property all over this city. And you all are gonna be seeing, experiencing more working homeless people in the future than you can shake a stick at. I beg you all, scrap cop city, because once you see these people being evicted, y'all gonna have to make a decision.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
H. McGinnis.
Hi, my name's, uh, Huberta McGinnis, and I, I do first want to say that I, I think it's appalling to hear what's, what's happening over at the Landmark Highrise. Um, I, and I also understand that, uh, twenty-three-zero-ten-eight-four has been referred, but I do want to shed another light on, uh, short-term rentals and how, um, even though I just recently heard about this, it would even affect me personally. Um, I've been in, in my neighborhood since ninety-eight, and I've owned my home, um, since two thousand and four, and I have a successful short-term rental on my property. It's, it's what has helped me afford the, the property taxes that have quadrupled because we don't have state legislation against that, which is a lot of what's caused some of these other issues. But it, that's what's afforded me, to be able to stay in my home, not have to move. It is something I count on as part of my income. So it, it truly, there needs to be some collaboration, some, some planning between the community, as well as people who possibly are homeowner-occupied, successfully have an Airbnb as part of their income to stay in this city. But to include more language than what I currently see, uh, whether it's a grandfather clause, whether it's something regarding owner-occupied properties, but to, and to post ahead of time that, hey, this is the time that we'd like to call, you know, everyone who's available to come to a meeting, to have a discussion, to, to hear your side of the story. But I was, uh, blindsided to see that there were two meetings last week regarding this issue, and this was the first that it was popping up for me to be aware of it. So, Councilman Lewis, I, I'd appreciate you taking some other considerations into account.
Next will be Stephanie Saxon, followed by Richard Paner and Nate Bailey. Briefly, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you for, uh, coming today. I will say, us, a lot of the folks who came in today also were talking about short-term rentals from our community, and they've been put out of their homes. Uh, I live on, I live in Polar Rock, and so my neighbor, my across-the-street neighbor lived there before me, I know her daughter because I went to school with her daughter, so that's how long they've been living there. Uh, they, they, they were rent, they're long-term renters. Uh, the person who owned their home, the moment that the lease came up, raised it by five hundred, and now it's Airbnb. And so I understand what you're saying, but I, we also heard all the folks that came in here today as well, uh, who were saying the opposite. And so, uh, when I'm thinking about like people that wanna actually rent for a, uh, reasonable rate in this city who've always been here, and I see Airbnbs on my street, I got three of them already. And so the legislation we're putting together would actually make it to where there's like an Airbnb every five streets. And it ain't happening in everybody's community, I, I speak to other council members, I say, how many Airbnbs do you have on your street? They say zero, but in District Twelve, uh, they removing people that have been living there thirty years, and now it's becoming an Airbnb, and it's across the street from the council member. So I get to see it, I live in it. I appreciate you for coming out today.
Stephanie Saxon, you have two minutes.
Thank you for having me, um, President Shipman and the rest of the council. I'm also speaking in regards to ordinance twenty-three-zero-ten-eight-four on the STRs. I'm a thirty-seven-year resident of District Two, um, and I've owned my home since nineteen-ninety-nine. I've retired, and I do depend on some income from my Airbnb that I operate out of my own home that I, I live in. So it's sharing my home, it's not, um, a house that I own somewhere on the other side of town. But I would like to say that Atlanta is not a good city if you can't afford to live here, and that's what we've been hearing all afternoon. So these corporations who come in from outside are really the equivalent of absentee landlords. They don't care about quality of life, and they don't, they only care about the bottom line, and that's really what's driving up these prices. I feel so sorry for somebody who's trying to buy their first home today in, in twenty-twenty-three, and I also feel sorry for people who live on a street that don't even know their neighbors because they're not from here, they're just coming in for a couple of days. That's not right, you need to have a neighborhood where everybody knows each other. So I do support your legislation, your, your ordinance, there's just one small piece I would like for you to amend. If you could make sure you put in writing that the existing people who already have a license, like me and my neighbor, um, could please, um, have that in writing, that this is, that we're factored in. I, I, it's my understanding that maybe you're proposing for any new ones coming in, but the ones that already exist, we'd like to still, still have that because we need the income. Thank you.
Next will be Richard Paner.
Good afternoon, everyone. Yes. Uh, and thank you all, especially to Mr. Jason Winston for assistance in getting me to my final progression in what I'm about to explain now. Uh, I purchased the home in Boulevard Heights, uh, back in May twenty-twenty-one, it's in, on an oversized lot, uh, and pretty much everyone in the neighborhood is looking to subdivide their lots and get them off so that people can then own and build on those properties. Uh, it's coming up on two years now. Uh, I've dealt with a lot of delays in regards to the city rezoning the neighborhood from R4 to R4 B.C. That took about eight months. Uh, my loan was for twelve months, and so as you can see, I'm in a bit of a tight crunch where I've asked for a lot of the extensions. Um, I'm not a big-time developer, just a small-town kid trying to build for my family and generations to follow. Currently at the five-yard line, but I'm being required to either put in a sidewalk or get a sidewalk waiver at the cost of fifty-five and a half thousand dollars. Um, this would then take my entire deposit to start construction on the home. Uh, none of the neighbors or none of the owners on my block have a sidewalk, there is a brand-new sidewalk across the street. Um, and to kind of, um, put this in kind of in perspective, I've went and gotten a couple of quotes to actually put in the sidewalk, and the average cost is about sixteen thousand dollars. So that's about a forty thousand dollar reduction in what I'm being charged by the city of Atlanta to, and, uh, to have to get this sidewalk waiver. Um, I'm just asking that if I do need to put in a sidewalk, that for my lender's sake and that I don't get foreclosed on, on this property, that I get an expedited sidewalk permit, or that the sidewalk waiver that I do have is in line with the actual cost is to put in a sidewalk? I tried to reason with those at ATL DOT who's giving me this, uh... I tried to reason with those at ATL DOT, who's giving me this, this quote, but with not much luck and a lot of resentment. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Next up will be Nate Bailey, followed by C. Perry and Philip Boykin.
Evening, Council. Nate Bailey, President of Atlanta Professional Firefighters and the Professional Firefighters of Georgia. Just want to make a few comments about the resolution today supporting the stadium surcharge tax. We've been working on this for a few years. It was first mentioned by Councilmember Hillis. Doing some research, it's, it's a surefire win for the city. On game day, visitors use our services. Edgewood would respond, the engine in Edgewood would respond downtown, Castleberry Hill, Vine City, all those fire engines are pulled downtown on game day when we have major events. So it's more of a call-sharing fee or a user fee, and with this money, we could provide, we could purchase AEDs, we could provide more paramedic training for our firefighters. You know, some of you, some of y'all saw that training and equipment in use just the other day, and you saw how intense it was, and it's, it's very expensive. So Engine One, on an average day, may run 15 calls, but if there's something going on at the bends, or, you know, State Farm Arena, they might run 30 calls. So our call volume spikes up. We use a lot of resources, and we can generate the money from this user fee to pay some of that back and also expand on the service that we provide for the city. Ultimately, it'll make the city safer without putting the cost on the backs of our single-family homeowners and small business. Also, the other resolution today for the community safe housing, we absolutely support that. You know, we have firefighters from all over. We have firefighters from Trinidad, Virgin Islands, Brooklyn, Miami, and sometimes they'll go through the process, and then when they get here, the housing can be kind of a struggle, and that seems to be the theme today. So thank you for your time and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a note, we've had a little bit of technical difficulty with our screen, so the system's being resetted, but we're still keeping the time. C. Perry, two minutes.
Good afternoon. I'm C. Perry, AKA Chioki, and I vote in Council District One. Real simple, the last time I was here, I spoke about my disappointment because I didn't get a rendition of "Lift Every Voice and Sing." Today, you hear those voices, so I'm hoping, real hopeful, that you're really attentive to those voices and what you've heard. Simply put, I heard a lot of people come to this microphone asking that you represent them, that you do it with, with respect and dignity to the community and the things that they need to, to live a qualitative life here in Atlanta. So I want to revert back to my idea of leadership, and it lingers somewhere between 34, 35, maybe as young as 19, based on Atlanta's history. The election of Manette Jackson, roughly 35, John Lewis's shadowing Dr. King to the 1963 March on Washington, the wonderful students in 1960 at the AU Center that led the Atlanta Student Movement, sheltered and, and given sanctuary at Rush Memorial. We are asking you to do what Manette did and stand up for the people of Atlanta. Real simple, show honor in these seats. To whom much is given, much shall be required. Let what has happened and been stated here today not fall upon deaf ears.
Time has expired.
Thank you for being Atlanta's City Council.
Thank you. Next will be Philip Boykin, followed by Kathy McClure.
Hi, good afternoon. Not much for public speaking, but I wanted to say, City of Atlanta is a great city. I've been all over the world, and there's no place I'd rather live. Great leadership throughout the time I've lived here, and I've been a homeowner in Old Fourth Ward for the past eight years, also a homeowner in Rentalstown for the past two years. And I like to say I paid, you know, a little $15,000 cumulatively in taxes, and that leads me to my next point in regards to Airbnb and the short-term rental. Airbnb was set up for hosts, local hosts, to host people from out of town and give them local experiences. I actually experience that when I go to other cities around the world, and it's a really great platform for that. But I do understand the narrative behind Airbnb and why, you know, some people would not want to have it in their communities. That being said, I wanted to say that that should not come at the expense of resident homeowners that have built their homes and, and part of their income strategy around Airbnb. I know that there have been instances where parties or, or corporations are coming in, but this is not the case for the local homeowner, the, the individual Airbnb mom-and-pop entity to do these types of things. So instead of throwing the baby out with the bathwater, what I would suggest the city does is maybe create, create some type of council between, you know, affordable housing, people that own Airbnbs as, as residents, and city leadership, so that we can talk about different technologies, taxes, concerns, as opposed to just saying, hey, look, this is not benefiting the community, and let's just throw the baby out with the bathwater. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Kathy McClure. You'll have four minutes due to yielded time, followed by Joanna Miller and David Aiden.
Good afternoon. My name is Kathy McClure. My comment concerns the proposed revision to the short-term rental ordinance 23-0-181084. I am a lifelong Atlanta resident, and my husband and I own two short-term rentals in Piedmont Heights that we've operated. They're family-friendly. We've operated them since 2016. I'm also an attorney and the Vice President of the Atlanta Metro Short-Term Rental Alliance. Amstra is a nonprofit, all-volunteer organization that advocates for the interests of short-term rental homeowners and property managers. Our organization recognizes the need for reasonable, responsible regulation of short-term rentals to ensure that our guests are respectful of their neighbors and abide by all applicable laws. We are, we encourage our members to apply and comply with regulatory ordinances, such as the one that currently exists in Atlanta. We are pleased that the administration has stepped forward to propose a revision to the short-term rental ordinance. We agree a revision is sorely needed. To avoid the legal and administrative stumbles, including a burdensome and overly complicated application process that has resulted in a year-long extension of the enforcement date, we believe it is imperative, imperative that the revised ordinance comport with the law and that the new regulatory scheme be simple, practical, and enforceable. As to legality, the administration has rightly acknowledged that the current primary residence requirement is likely unconstitutional, as has been held by the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals with respect to the New Orleans ordinance. We are concerned that aspects of the proposed revision are excessive, complicated, and impractical, and will likely exact an outsized administrative burden. We are also concerned that this proposed ordinance and the existing ordinance fail to recognize the rights, the grandfathered rights of existing eligible short-term rental owners consistent with the Supreme Court of Georgia's decision, unanimous decision in Morgan versus May in 2019. When it comes to short-term rental ordinances, there is no one-size-fits-all. Let's work together. Let's find the best fit for Atlanta, and let's get it right this time. Thank you.
Next will be Joanna Miller, followed by David Aiden and Nadia Giordani. Two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Councilmembers and City of Atlanta zoning committee. My name is Joanna Miller, and I am a short-term rental owner here in Atlanta, have been since 2017. I, we are owner-occupied, and we also have an additional dwelling unit that goes in line with the current, the current ordinance. I, I just want to offer perspective, because I'm not an investor. I, this was basically an opportunity for us to support the city through our nonprofit called Be Compelled, that serves West, the Vine City and the West End youth who are at risk. And we, we came here for this opportunity, and, I mean, it's expensive to live here. So we got creative and did the short-term rental business. It has been a lifesaver. We're able to pursue our passions, we're able to support our family, and I just want to say that we're responsible hosts. We do everything to vet our guests. Not to say that we've had, you know, challenging experiences, but we were able to rectify that because we are owner-occupied, and we also have a great relationship with all of our neighbors. And they're, they also are like aware, and we communicate well. So the reason why I want to offer perspective is that there are people, owners out here, hosts out here, who are literally trying to collaborate with the city and just trying to make this platform a, an experience that everyone can agree with and that people feel safe. The other thing is that it has brought money into our local economies, our small businesses. So anyway, this is a perspective of a family just trying to make it from the additional income that the short-term rental industry provides. Thank you.
Next will be David Aiden. You have two minutes.
Hello, Council. Thank you for having me here. I've come to offer another perspective on short-term rentals as well. I bought my home in Cabbage Town 20 years ago, and as of today, because of taxes, my mortgage is now over 50% more than I paid when I purchased my home. I'm a single mom. I have a student who's a senior in college now. She's an honor roll, she's a great kid. And because of Airbnb and the fact that we can short-term rental, I can afford to stay in my home, and as I watch my taxes increase, I can stay there. I really, it's really a passion of mine to help people age in place. We talk about that as a city. We talk about helping people keep their homes, but I don't see where we're doing the work that's necessary to do that. I pride myself in teaching people and helping them learn how to run a short-term rental in their homes, on their property. We have an ordinance that was passed a year ago, which we supported, we really supported it, because I don't want to see my neighborhood become a short-term rental district. So for me, as a private homeowner, that I can do a short-term rental on my property, it's a great opportunity, and I'd like to see us work together to make that happen. That ordinance keeps getting pushback and pushback. I've applied, I paid my fee, yet it's not being enforced. And I just would like to know what, what we can do together to make this a better situation and help the community so that people can afford to stay in their homes. Thank you for your time.
Next will be Ryan Toth, followed by Lolita Martin and Rachel Allred.
My name is Ryan. I live in District Three. I manage properties in District Two. I appreciate Councilmember Lewis's comments about the short-term rentals that have popped up in District 12. Quite frankly, I was a little surprised at the amount that you're referring to. I haven't looked too close into it, but I think it's safe to say that not every district has the same problem with short-term rentals as yours or others. So my concern is with the ordinance in its current form. You know, I'm here to reject the way that it's proposed. I understand there's a need for affordable housing. I understand there's a need to prevent these party houses, but I don't think in its current form, it's going to solve those issues, quite frankly. I think that the ordinance is not respected. I think it will be ignored. So I urge the council, council to be confident that the ordinance can be effectively regulated. Otherwise, they're just going to ignore it, and you're going to lose good hosts like myself, and you'll still gain the bad ones. I represent a building downtown called Peachtree Towers. It, it's a building very similar to a previously mentioned building called The Landmark. I, I don't know The Landmark, but I speculate that some of their issues may be arising from the management of the building rather than the short-term rentals that exist into it, or a combination of both. Peachtree Towers has a very strong HOA with deep reserves. It's well-run with a mix of short-term, long-term, owner-occupied units, and it's been operating that way since 1962. Prior to the, the, the short-term rental popularity, the building was a shell of itself, and the reason our reserves are as strong as they are now is because of the property value that has increased because of our ability to do short-term rentals. I assure you that if the ordinance passes in its current form, there will be a fire sale in this building, 100%. I, I suspect that the property values were dropped by about 50%.
Time has expired.
I have plenty else to say, but if anyone else wants to contact me directly, I'd love to talk about it. Thank you.
Next will be Lolita Martin, followed by Rachel Allred.
So I live in Councilmember Farokey's district, who, in the last month, I believe, proposed the $500,000 from the American Rescue Plan be given to the Atlanta Police Foundation to subsidize housing for police in Atlanta. And I mean no disrespect to firefighters, who I know are included in that plan, but the Atlanta Police Foundation just fundraised millions of dollars to build a police training facility in South DeKalb, a majority-low-income and black community. If they can fundraise $60 million for the police training facility, why give them $500,000 of taxpayer dollars? We have citizens in Atlanta and your districts who are houseless. I do not see how housing for the police can be a priority right now, no matter your views on policing. Yesterday, I met a veteran who's 60 years old, living on the street in Atlanta within blocks of where we're meeting today. His name is Jesse, and he's in serious need of dental care, which that alone will take years off of his life by how it affects his nutrition. He's also in need of shoes because he suffers from nerve damage in his feet. How many of you experienced housing insecurity growing up? It deeply affects your well-being, and it keeps you in poverty. It affects your mental health and your physical health. I just do not see how policing, housing for policing is our priority over people who are being killed, who are dying because they're houseless in Atlanta. We just had how cold of a night on Friday. If, if we didn't have a cold housing place set up, people could have died. So I please urge you to shift your priority to people who are houseless. If you have $500,000 to give, please prioritize those people. Thank you.
Next will be Rachel Allred, followed by Frankie Elliott and Henry Jordan.
Good afternoon. Does it start, does it start? Good afternoon. I don't really know why everyone's tripping out about Ubers and Airbnbs. Sorry. Rachel Allred, King Arnold Street. From a business perspective, I'm gonna take it one step further. From a business perspective, you all have been misguided and misdirected. This is not your fault. This is due to centuries of historical and systematic greed, and for the law people, this is called negligence. I'd like to redirect your priorities and mindset to one of minimalism. Stop giving governmental, governmental... Stop giving governmental, governmental money to people already well-off. The Beltline, what more infrastructure do we need? This is America. However, this is Atlanta, the first city to go green, the first city to bring everyone up to code. SB 62, please take that one slow. Do not make it mandatory at first. That would be called for the law people. That would be kidnapping. SB 62, you can't just go in and get the homeless people and say, "Hey, come with me." No, you got to say, "Hey, I got this good offer for you," right? Marta, focus on perfecting, Marta. That would help people even in my class. From a business perspective, Marta is terrible right now. Marta's terrible right now. We'll keep it with that. Marta's terrible right now and needs to be fixed immediately on my side of town. You're really missing out on a lot of revenue by not fixing the basic thing. After me, I'm a 27-year-old rapper born in Atlanta, raised in Beaufort. Stop putting my bosses in jail and just help the hip-hop community, Zulu Nation. What's the solution? Water is my top priority. We are humans first. Our basic survival need is water, alkaline water, to be exact. It's alkaline water. Then food. Does everyone have a grocery store in walkable distance to get their fruits and vegetables? You can sell this in a gas station. These are solutions. Shelter. Affordable housing does not mean cramming a family into one bedroom and bath. That is due to, not you guys, it's due to the historical lack of job opportunity. This, again, is the turning point in Atlanta of historical and systematic conscious greed, and for the law people, it's called negligence. Stop giving money to people that are already well-off. Take it back to the basics. This is Atlanta, survival basics. Thank you.
Next will be Frankie Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just going to waive my time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker today is Henry Jordan.
Give naught to spirit of God to everyone that's here. And said, "O full of hostility, of all hostility, and all mischief, thou child of the devil, our enemy of all righteousness, wilt thou not cease revert the right ways of the Lord?" Acts 13, Chapter 10, verse 1. War, the rumors of wars, refers to peace being taken from the earth, and the constant wars that continually mark the age of the Gentiles. When you seek to practice evil deeds, injustice, fraud, lying, treachery, et cetera, you ask for Jesus' wrath upon the earth. James Griffin. Who is the king of glory? The Lord, strong and mighty, the Lord mighty in battle. Psalms 24, Chapter 8, verse 1. Roared or iron, Christ will subject all to himself and destroy all his enemies. Help us not to be an enemy to Jesus Christ. For this cause God gave them up unto vile affections, for even their women did change their natural use, and to that which is against nature. Romans 1, Chapter 26, verse 1. God gave them up. This giving is not permissive. God let them do what they want to do. Or poverty, God rejoice his gracious help. It is judicial. To help keep my soul out of hell, I must help keep other souls from going to hell. Thou preparest a table before me in the presence of my enemies. Thou anointeth my head with oil my cup runneth over. Psalms 23, 5. The believer is more than a dependent sheep; however, he also like an honored guest, since the Lord prepared a table for him. We can't fight Satan without Jesus Christ. We got to fight Satan in us, around us, and in others, because sin will destroy and kill, and you see it yourself.
I want to thank everybody from the public who came out to speak today. We will now move to the report of the journal. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Good afternoon. I, Vanessa Walden, Deputy Municipal Clerk of the City of Atlanta, hereby certify that the regular meeting of February 6, 2023 minutes are true and correct.
If there are not any additions or changes to the minutes, I would entertain a motion to adopt. Moved, motion to adopt by Councilmember Lewis is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Dozier. We can do this via unanimous consent without objection. Any objection to the motion to adopt the minutes? Hearing none, Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent is 11 yays, 0 nays.
11 yays, 0 nays. The motion to adopt passes. Will now move to communications. Madam Deputy Clerk.
To take Communications 1 through 4 together, please.
Without objection. Please proceed.
Number 1, 23C 5028, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Shanae Joseph to serve as a member of the Municipal Market Company Board of Directors. This appointment is for a term of two years. Number 2, 23C 5029, a communication from Andre Dickens, I'm sorry, Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Ladonna Barnes, MBA, to serve as a member of the Municipal Market Company Board of Directors. This appointment is for a term of two years. Number 3, 23C 5030, a communication from Councilmembers Dustin Hillis, District 9, Andrea L. Boone, District 10, Marcy Collier Overstreet, District 11, Antonio Lewis, District 12, and Keisha Sean Waits, Post 3 at Large, appointing Mr. Scott Walker to serve as a member of the Housing Commission. This appointment is for a term of two years. Number 4, 23C 5031, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Fulton County Commissioner Ms. Dana Barrett to serve as a member of the Atlanta Development Authority Board of Directors. This appointment is for a term of four years. All four communications that were sounded, staff recommendation is to refer to the Community Development Human, I'm sorry, Human Services Committee and the Committee on Council.
Let all four items follow that course.
Number 5, 23C 5032, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Carla Inez Peniman to serve as a member of the Zoning Review Board in the Municipal Planning category. This appointment is for a term of two years. Staff recommendation is to refer to Zoning Committee and Committee on Council.
Let it follow that course.
Items 6 and 7 can be sounded together, please.
Without objection. Please proceed.
20, thank you. 23C 5033, a communication from Daniel Hampern, Chair Audit Committee, submitting a memo postponing the completion of the audit of the Office of Contract Compliance subcontractor utilization undertaken in, in response to Resolution 22R 3198. Number 7, 23C 5034, a communication from Daniel Hampern, Chair Audit Committee, submitting a performance audit report for the Municipal Market. Both items are recommended, recommended to be referred to the Finance Executive Committee.
Let it, both items follow that course.
The final communication is 23C 5035, a communication from Chief Procurement Officer Jadip Manjoo, submitting the January 1, 2023, through January 31, 2023, monthly contracts report to the City Council and Clerk of Council pursuant to Section 2-1142 of the Atlanta City Code of Ordinances. Staff recommendation is to accept and file.
Let it follow that course. Are there any items for vetoed legislation for consideration?
No, sir.
Is there any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Thank you. With that, we will move to the Consent Agenda, Section 1. It can be found on page 4 of the materials. These are items for second reading. The appropriate motion will be an emotion to adopt, but first, let me ask if there are any items to be removed from the Consent Agenda, Councilmember Juan.
Thank you, Council President. On page 11, item number 28, trace 23-01075. Again, page 11, item 28, 23-01075.
Thank you. Any other items to be removed from the Consent Agenda, Section 1? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, Section 1, with the one item removed? Moved by Councilmember Juan, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Amos. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, Section 1, with one item removed? Hearing none, will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, Section 1.
The vote is open. Will all members please vote? One moment, please. 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays. The motion to adopt carries. Will now move to the Consent Agenda, Section 2. It begins on page 26 of the materials. These are items for first reading. The appropriate motion will be to refer, but first, let me ask, are there any items to be removed from the Consent Agenda, Section 2? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to refer. Moved by Councilmember Juan, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Dozier. Motion to refer the Consent Agenda, Section 2. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer? Hearing none, will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer the Consent Agenda, Section 2.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays. The motion to refer carries. Will now move to the report of standing committees. I will just remind my colleagues that at least three committees need to go in the council, Committee of the Whole, so we'll have a little bit of procedures to work through today. But first up is the City Utilities Committee, Chair Winston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, everyone. Please turn to page 29 on your agenda for the Standing Committee Report for City Utilities. Council President, may I sound item number 1?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Item number 22-R-4578, a resolution by City Utilities Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an agreement for IFB-C-1220308 Outdoor Activity Center Green Infrastructure Project with RES Environmental Operating Company, LLC, on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management, for a term to commence from the date of notice to proceed is issued for a period of nine months in an amount not to exceed $1,300,614.63. All services will be charged to and paid from accounts numbers listed herein and for other purposes. The department requested that this item is filed. The item, the motion is to file.
There's a motion to file 22-R-4578. Is there a second? I'm going to assume it didn't come out of committee that way, so we'll just take a second. Councilmember Norwood, seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion to file? Hearing none, will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file 22-R-4578.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays. The motion to file carries.
Council President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to Community Development Human Services Committee, Chair Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, there are two CDP items that were held on CDHS that are companion papers to zoning papers that will be acted on today with the zoning committee going into Committee of the Whole. And CDHS would actually like to act on these papers so that those companion pieces may be adopted together. So, I would like to move that council go into Committee of the Whole so we can take those two items.
There's a motion to move into Committee of the Whole by Councilmember Dozier, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Juan. Is there any discussion on the motion to move into Committee of the Whole? We can do this via unanimous consent. Any object, excuse me, any objection to moving to Committee of the Whole? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to move to Committee of the Whole.
Unanimous consent, 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays. The motion carries. We are now in Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, these are items number 10 and 11 on pages 32 and 33 of the agenda. I would like to take these items with the block.
Any objection? Go ahead.
All right. The first item is 22-O-1847, which is CDP-22-33, an ordinance by the Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the 2021 Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to re-designate property located at 1202 West Marietta Street from the office institutional land use designation to the mixed-use medium-density land use designation, and 1192 West Marietta Street from the mixed-use land use designation to the mixed-use medium-density land use designation, and for other purposes. The next item is 22-O-1848, CDP-22-34, an ordinance by the Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of 2021 Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to re-designate property located at 1060, 1070, and 1080 Wright Street Northwest from the single-family residential land use designation to the medium-density residential land use designation, and for other purposes. I would like to move to approve both those items.
There's a motion to adopt 22-O-1847 and 22-O-1848 by Councilmember Dozier. It's been seconded by Councilmember Juan. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt these two items? Hearing none, will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt these two items in Committee of the Whole.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Mr. Shipman, the citizens usually have a right in Committee of the Whole to be able to have a comment, to be able to engage while we're in.
I don't believe that's accurate in Committee of the Whole. If it's in the committee, that's true, but if it's Committee of the Whole, it's not true. That's under the rules of council.
Is this legislation that, that, is all legislation you're going to discuss is on the agenda?
The Parliamentarian's advising is correct. It would take a vote of two-thirds by council to allow discussion. It's not a public meeting, simply Committee of the Whole.
I just asked a question. What you're discussing, is it on the agenda?
Yes, it's, it is a held paper in the committee.
Thank you.
The vote is closed. 12 yays, 0 nays.
12 yays, 0 nays. The motion to adopt carries.
Council President Shipman, that concludes our legislative items, and I would like to move that we, council exit Committee of the Whole.
There's a motion by Councilmember Dozier, seconded by Councilmember Juan, to exit Committee of the Whole. Is there any discussion on the motion to exit Committee of the Whole? We can do this via unanimous consent without objection. Any objection to moving out of Committee of the Whole? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent is 12 yays, 0 nays.
12 yays, 0 nays. The motion carries. We are, now have exited Committee of the Whole, and we are back into the regularly scheduled council meeting.
Mr. President, I move that all actions taken in Committee of the Whole be adopted by the full council.
There's, there's a motion by Councilmember Dozier, seconded by Councilmember Juan, that the actions taken in Committee of the Whole be adopted by the full council. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt these two items? Hearing none, will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays. The motion to adopt these two items carries.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Dozier. We will now move to Transportation Committee, Chair Faroki.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two papers today for our Transportation Committee Report. The first is 23O-1094, item 1 on page 35. This came out of committee favorable on condition. The caption reads, "An ordinance by Councilmembers Dustin Hillis, Michael Julian Bond, and Matt Westmoreland to amend Chapter 150 Traffic and Vehicles, Article 4, titled Stopping, Standing, and Parking, for the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, to add a new Division 11, titled Berkeley Park Permit Parking, and to waive certain requirements of the City Code Section 150-48 and 150-49, and for other purposes." Again, this paper came out of committee favorable on condition. The condition was for the Law Department to provide a substitute that waives an additional code section and clarifies the location of the residential permit parking program and assigns new code sections for Division 11. Excuse me. That condition has been met. The substitute has been distributed. I will move to bring forward the substitute.
There's a motion to bring forward the substitute by Councilmember Faroki, seconded by Councilmember Hillis. Is there any discussion on the motion to bring forward the substitute? Hearing none, will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to bring forward the substitute. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to bring forth the substitute.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. 12 yays, 0 nays.
12 yays, 0 nays, the motion to bring forth the substitute carries. Oh, please reflect Councilmember Bond's vote as a yay. Thank you, Councilmember Bond.
Duly noted. 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays, the motion to bring forth the substitute carries.
The substitute reads now, "An ordinance by Councilmembers Dustin Hillis, Michael Julian Bond, and Matt Westmoreland, substituted by the Atlanta City Council, in order to amend Chapter 150 Traffic and Vehicles, Article 4, Stopping, Standing, and Parking of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to Add a New Division 11, titled Berkeley Park Permit Parking, and to waive certain requirements of the City Code Sections 150-146, 150-148, and 150-149 and for other purposes." I will move to approve.
There's a motion to adopt 22, 23-0-1094, as substituted, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Norwood. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none, will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt as substituted.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays, the motion to adopt as substituted carries.
Our second item is 22R 3218. It's item number 2 on Page 35 in the agenda. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to extend the term of FC 9211 land, excuse me, landside electrical on-call contractor service by Brooksberry Hindian Associates at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport on behalf of the Department of Aviation on a month-to-month basis for a period up to nine months with no additional funding required and for other purposes. Our Transportation Department has requested that this paper be filed, and so the action before us is to file it.
Is that the action coming out of committee?
Correct.
There's a motion coming out of committee, it doesn't need a second, to file 23-R-3218. Is there any discussion on the motion to file? Hearing none, will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays, the motion to file carries.
That concludes the committee's report.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to Finance Exec, Chair Wan.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, we're on Page 39 in the agenda. The first item is 23-0-1080, an ordinance by Councilmembers Byron D. Amos, Dustin Hillis, Michael Julian Bond, Mary Norwood, and Andrea L. Boone, as substituted and amended by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to authorize the chief financial officer to execute a master lease agreement with JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A., for the acquisition of 100 Dodge Chargers and 100 Dodge Durangos with police packages for APD Fleet, and three Chevy Tahos and one GMC Yukon XL with police packages for Mayoral Detail on behalf of the Atlanta Police Department, with Akins Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram and Hardy Family Fleet in an amount not to exceed $12,109,782.90 and for other purposes. Motion from the committee is to adopt as, on substitute as amended.
There's a motion coming out of committee to adopt 23-0-1080 as substituted and amended, doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none, will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays, the motion to adopt carries.
Mr. President and colleagues, the next one item, we're going to have to go into Committee of the Whole to address. We inadvertently left this off our action items on Wednesday. I'll make a motion to go in the Committee of the Whole.
There's a motion by Councilmember Wan, seconded by Councilmember Shook, to move into Committee of the Whole. Is there any discussion on the motion to move into Committee of the Whole? We can do this via unanimous consent without objection, any objection? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent is 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays, the motion carries. We're now in Committee of the Whole.
Thank you. Item 23-R 3908, a resolution by Councilmembers Amir Faroki, Michael Julian Bond, Matt Westmoreland, Keisha Sean Waits, Jason Winston, Byron D. Amos, Jason Dozier, Liliana Bactiari, Alex Wan, Howard Shook, Mary Norwood, Dustin Hillis, Andrea L. Boone, Marcy Collier-Overstreet, and Antonio Lewis, as substituted by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the City of Atlanta to donate American Rescue Plan Act funds to the Atlanta Police Foundation to support the community safety housing program for sworn police, fire, and corrections personnel in an amount, in a total amount not to exceed $500,000.00, authorizing the mayor or his designee to enter into a donation agreement with APF to authorize the chief financial officer to make all payments from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes. The item was dual-referred to Public Safety and Legal Administration and Finance Executive. In the first committee, it was deemed favorable on substitute, and is now before us. Following that trail, I will make a motion to adopt on substitute.
There's a motion to adopt, and I just want to clarify, there might have been a typo, it's 23-R-3098.
Oh, yeah, thank you, sorry.
By Councilmember Wan, a motion to adopt, seconded by Councilmember Shook. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none, we will move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays, the motion to adopt in Committee of the Whole carries.
I'll now make a motion to return to regular session.
There's a motion by Councilmember Wan, seconded by Councilmember Shook, to exit Committee of the Whole. Is there any discussion on the motion to exit Committee of the Whole? We can do this via unanimous consent without objection, any objection? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent is 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays. We are now exited Committee of the Whole, and we are back into the regular council session.
So with that, I'll make a motion to affirm the action just taken in Committee of the Whole.
There's a motion to adopt 23-R-3098 coming out of Committee of the Whole, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Faroki. Any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none, will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt 23-R-3098.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays, the motion to adopt carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to take the next two items together, if I may.
Without objection, please proceed.
All right, first item is 23-R 3154, a resolution by Councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into contract renewal option number 2 with Premier Events LLC, contract number listed, Festival Management Services on behalf of the mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs in an amount not to exceed $41,500.00, all contracted work to be charged to and paid from funding numbers listed herein and for other purposes. And then 23-R 3162, a resolution by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into contract renewal option number 2 with Phoenix Concessions LLC, contract number listed, Vendor Management Services on behalf of the mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs. All contract revenue shall be deposited into accounts listed herein and for other purposes. Motion from the committee on both items is to file.
There's a motion coming out of committee, it doesn't need a second, to file both 23-R-3154 and 23-R-3162. Is there any discussion on the motion to file? Hearing none, will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file these two items.
Vote is open. Please vote. The vote is closed. 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays, the motion to file these two items carries.
Our final item is number 5, 23-R 3224. It's a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, supporting state legislation in the Georgia General Assembly that would establish a public safety stadium surcharge for events with at least 9,500 tickets available in order to provide additional revenue for local public safety departments and for other purposes. Motion from the committee is to adopt.
There's a motion coming out of committee, it doesn't need a second, to adopt 23-R-3224. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none, will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays, the motion to adopt carries.
Mr. President, I do have an announcement. The Finance Executive Committee will convene a work session this Wednesday, February 22, at 9:00 a.m. in Committee Room 1. The newly anointed Larry.